Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, February 28, 2022. At first, I am going to do roll call. Selectman Bendel?
Present.
Selectman Kira?
Here.
Selectman DePalmer?
Here.
And Selectman O'Connell is not present this evening. She had a commitment. I'd like to ask you all to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. First order of business is transmitting of Treasury warrant numbers 34, 34A, 35, and 35A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Approved. There are no approval of minutes. Before we get into the first appointment, I just want to mention that Stephen Potat, the General Manager of the MBTA, is unable to attend this evening, so we're working on rescheduling it, just in case anybody was here for that. I just wanted to get that out of the way. Okay, so our first appointment this evening is James Castellano from Highland Estates regarding a public hearing for a permit to remove earth for property located at Darby Lane. Mr. Hull, do you want to read the...
So, just to read the notice of the public hearing into the record. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen in the town of Wilmington, 121 Glen Road, Room 9, Wilmington, Mass., at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 28, 2022, on the application of James V. Castellano to remove earth product on the land situated at Darby Lane, Wilmington, Mass., and further described as parcels 5, 5A, 6, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 49, 50, 51, and 52A on Assessor's Map 10 and shown on a plan on file with the application for said permit.
Okay, and I'd like to confirm that the notice was published, posted, and served upon interest parties as required. Okay. And it was posted, Beverly, correct? Great. And then the application is completed?
Mr. Castellano, do you have the green cards?
I do have everything.
Okay. Sure, just give us a second.
Yep, you can sit. Okay, I would now like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for purposes of considering an earth removal permit as described. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, so moved. The public hearing is now over. I'm sorry, open. I do want to just go over a few basic ground rules before we start. Comments will be limited to the subject of the application. And we will start with comments from Mr. Castellano. Sorry, didn't want to get that wrong. And then we will go with comments, recommendations from staff, followed by fellow board members, and then we will ask members of the audience if they have any questions or comments. I do ask that all questions and comments be directed through myself. Okay, so, Mr. Castellano, you'll be representing the application, and if you could just identify yourself, name, address, and your affiliation to the profit for the record.
Mr. Castellano, he's up in Wilmington, Wilmington.
Okay.
I own and operate on the development project.
Okay.
I have here the return receipts.
Great.
I have copies, if you want copies. I have the originals, if you want the originals of all the tickets, you know, the little certificates that they place time stamped and everything.
Okay.
So if the copies are good enough, I have them all stapled, if you want the originals.
The originals would be good, yes.
And I have all the return receipts. I'll turn those into Beverly, and I have, as required, there was a $98,400 bond, a tri-party agreement that was required. I have the, it's executed. I have three originals right here. I can leave a copy with Beverly as well.
That'd be great, thank you. You may begin your presentation.
I really don't, I don't have a presentation. I applied to remove the blast at ledge and all the material to bring the subdivision down to the grade we need it. And we had a huge elevation on the left side of the road. We blasted it out to get the road through it. We stocked out the material on the left side of the road, and now we're looking to remove it.
Okay.
We crushed some of it on site. We brought some material in, as we brought some material out to have it crushed and create road base to build the road base and pave the, you know, the new roadway at Darby Lane.
Okay, great. Mr. Hull?
So, at this point, in terms of recommendations, I have correspondence from Shirley Newhouse, the Health Director recommends approval. The building inspector notes is no issuance, the issuance of the above referenced permit. I've got a memo here from Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. The definitive subdivision for Darby Lane located off Hawkins Street received planning board approval in 2019 for the construction of a new roadway utilities and stormwater infrastructure and the creation of 17 single-family house lots. The grading plan submitted with the earth removal application matches the plan approved by the planning board under subdivision control in the town of Wilmington, rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. As such, granting the permit for earth removal is recommended. And separately from that is a memorandum from Paul, Mike Woods and Paul Looney from Public Works. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the application for permit to remove earth materials within the town of Wilmington. It's the above referenced project. The applicant is preparing to remove approximately 9,840 cubic yards of material from the project site to accommodate the grading requirements to complete the construction of 17 lot subdivision. We note the board, we note for the board that the project received approval from the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Specifically, the applicant is constructing a subdivision plan approved by the town's planning board. As such, the DPW recommends granting the earth removal permit subject to the following conditions. There's a series of conditions that are recommended, which I can read into the record if you would, if you're so inclined. So, the conditions that are being recommended would be, this permit is not assignable. Condition two, at the expiration of the permit, the grade shall conform substantially to the proposed grades as shown on the plan set approved by the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Condition three, at the expiration of the permit, the entire area shall be covered with loam and seeded with recognized grass seed of good quality, except where the areas consist of proposed hardscape and proposed pavement services or other specific surfaces treatment as indicated on the approved plan set. Condition four, the applicant, its agents, and employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site and shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. Number five, the hauling route for construction vehicles and equipment is anticipated to be Hawkins to Route 129 to Route 38 to Route 62. Number six, the hours of hauling on ways used by the public shall be limited to Monday through Friday inclusive and not earlier than 7:00 AM and not later than 3:30 PM. Condition seven, the applicant shall agree to keep loam within the town of Wilmington whenever possible. Number eight, the rock crushing operations are to be used on-site. They will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM on normal workdays only. Rock crushing operations are not allowed on the weekends or holidays. Number nine, blasting operations shall be in accordance with all town, state, and federal laws, regulations, and policies as may be applicable. Number 10, the applicant or their designated contractor shall install crushed stone construction pads as needed to prevent sediment tracking held onto Hawkins Street. Number 11, the applicant or their designated contractor is responsible for the daily cleanup of all soil material, stones, et cetera, tracked along the hauling route. Periodic inspection will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure that the contractor is in compliance with the conditions of the permit. Number 12, the applicant or their designated contractor shall limit excessive dust and noise associated with the earth removal process to the extent practical. Number 13, the applicant shall notify the town of his/her intentions to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. Number 14, the applicant is required to furnish a performance bond made payable to the town of Wilmington for the faithful performance of the work under the permit. The Engineering Division is recommending a performance bond amount of $98,400. The applicant shall contact the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works to coordinate said performance bond.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll look it up to our board members here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions, if I may. Mr. Castellano, good evening. Thank you for being here. My question for you is, once granted the permit, could you give us an idea when you anticipate to start hauling the...
As quickly as I can coordinate it with the trucking companies, weather permitting. And if it snows, it slows us down, but as quickly as I can get coordinated. We've been waiting, so.
Thank you, sir. And my second question, just through Mr. Hull, could you confirm, I believe legal counsel has no objection to this grant in this permit?
Legal counsel has not been asked in terms of the pros or cons. Essentially, I guess the one point I would note, I did consult with counsel about the parameters that the board has to evaluate the granting or denial. And essentially, because this is a, the subdivision has been approved by the planning board, the board could not essentially deny the earth removal permit because it would essentially thwart the approval that was granted by the planning board. So certainly, the board can condition the permit, but it cannot take action that would essentially undermine the ability to pursue the subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Castellano. The only question I have on this project is, do you have an estimated time when the hauling would be completed? And I understand weather permitting and everything, but are we looking at you getting into June, July, August?
No, no, no. These houses, without the, without the material being removed, we can't build the house. Quite frankly, I have, you know, preliminary PNS assigned, we want to have these houses framed and up like that. I would say 45 days, 30 days, 45 days it will all be gone, and maybe sooner. It depends. I mean, Lynch Materials is willing to take it off. They're under six miles away.
Yeah.
And they're going to provide trucking. We're going to provide two machines to load constantly, you know, as quickly as they can make their sweeps, we'll get them filled and returned, so.
Thank you very much.
I won't see a thing.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you.
No, I'm good. It seems all the approvals have been given through the two party heads, and everything seems to be in order. The butters have been notified.
All been notified. So, under the issue already, $98,400.
Great, thank you. At this time, I will ask if everybody in the audience wants to comment or ask questions, and if so, please state your name and address, and then please ask a question.
Paul Chalapour, 48 Hawkins Street, of Butter. I just have a question about the earth removal by law and how it relates to the special conditions of the subdivision plan, specifically number eight of the standard conditions, wherein it says, with regard to earth removal. I don't know if Tom, is town council here?
No. I'm unsure what the question is. What, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, how does the requirements of the earth removal by law relate to the standard conditions of the subdivision plan, specifically number eight, wherein it says, with regard to the hauling of earth materials, if approved, under the earth removal by law?
So, if the earth removal by law, it's subject to approval by the Board of Selectmen, I guess, would you?
You said that the board, you said that the legal opinion of the, you shot legal opinion as to whether or not the board can deny this permit, and the opinion is, is that they cannot? Is that, is that correct?
The opinion is that in this particular circumstance, because the planning board has essentially, has granted a subdivision approval on this project, the board is limited in terms of its ability to respond to this earth removal permit. It cannot deny it if by denying the permit, it would essentially eliminate the proponent's ability to complete the subdivision.
Getting back to that special condition where it says, if approved, is there any, are there any town officials that can comment on that particular clause?
Speaking of the number eight, this clause?
Yes.
I don't know, I think it's pretty clear. I don't understand the question, I guess.
The clause, if approved?
Well, it, it approves, so it's...
So, you're saying that it can't be denied?
That's right.
We can't deny it because if we were to deny it, Mr. Chalapour would not, I'm sorry, Mr. Castellano would not be able to build his homes.
I understand, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is that the wording of the definitive subdivision plan is at least ambiguous in meaning, in saying that if approved.
It's deferring to the Board of Selectmen, but ultimately, the opinion of counsel is that the Board of Selectmen cannot deny the permit.
The opinion of town council is that the Board of Selectmen cannot deny the permit.
That's right.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I actually came for the MBTA meeting, but I did have a suggestion on this.
State name and address, first, please.
Kevin McDowell, 140 Yenok Street. Just a real simple suggestion, that if you want to expedite this, I've given him the ability to be able to crush the material and to be able to sell the material, and I think you'll see that stuff fly out of there faster than you can imagine. And if you give him the ability to crush it, he'll be able to use it on the site and lower his costs, and there'll be less trucking on the streets. That's just my suggestion.
But we're not here to determine that. That's not our purview.
Well, you can give him a waiver on that.
Madam Chair.
I, I will listen to any of the meeting. I'm at the MBTA meeting.
That he is a resident of Wilmington.
Okay, I will take that into mind. Mr. DePalmer. Okay, we'll take that suggestion into record.
Is the MBTA meeting canceled?
It is. Mr. Potat couldn't make it this evening, so we're going to look to...
Have you taken any comments or suggestions on that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on this subject matter? All right, great, thank you. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, meeting is now closed. So voted. Yep.
I would like to offer a motion to grant the permit.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Permit approved. Good luck. Thank you very much for coming in today. Next, on appointments, we have George Hooper from the Public Buildings Superintendent regarding the oil tank, the Wildwood School. Good evening, Mr. Hooper.
Good evening, members of the board. As a request from the town manager, I came tonight to give an update on the Wildwood School. As you know, on January 22, the oil delivery was sent to the Wildwood School, which resulted in overfill. On January 24, our monitoring systems identified an issue. The system was checked. The tank was tested. The result of that test was a failure. A 3,000-gallon above-ground storage tank was brought to the site. The remaining fuel was evacuated from the existing tank. The DEP was notified. We are working with Maya, which is our insurance carrier. We've obtained Omni Environmental Group, which is our LSP. They have designed a response action plan as per required by the DEP. They provide all reporting, and they keep the DEP up to date. I believe you have a little site map in front of you?
Yeah.
So, all test borings and monitoring wells have been completed. That's to identify the extent of where it's going and try to keep this contained in the area. Over February, yeah, February vacation, we made some saw cuts to the asphalt, concrete caps, and we removed the cap over the tank, exposing the tank, removed the aggregate from around the tank, and then had the tank removed from the ground. The tank is still on-site. It's covered, it's stored until we can have it relocated. Okay. Today, they started the installation of two interceptor trenches and recovery wells. This will be used for the extraction of the fuel. That'll be, this should be completed by tomorrow. All right. The Public Buildings Department is working very closely with the LSP, the DEP, and keeping the school department abreast of advances in projects that we have going. So, do I have any questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Hooper, the only question I have is, it's showing that the septic tank is in the contaminated area. Will that septic tank have to be removed and a new one replacing it, or do you feel the oil will be able to be extracted?
Well, once the interceptors, their plan is, and this is the LSP, like I said, he's designing this plan, so they need to remove as much of the fuel from the ground, and then they're going to have to extract or excavate the earth around it. Most likely, that tank will have to come out.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Selectman Bendel.
Appreciate your speedy action here on this. I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
On the DEP that's been filed, does that notify the butters of this, what's taking place?
I don't believe so.
So, DEP doesn't notify?
I don't believe it does.
Okay.
And I could, I could talk to our LSP, and let's see what I know. There is a part of the action plan, so I'll have that discussion with him.
Appreciate that. Secondly, besides parking, any impact on, you know, day-to-day operations at the school?
No, no, no impact. That side of the parking lot has been fenced off, so there's no access there. We've had to relocate the dumpster, and then we still have to make fuel deliveries to our above-ground storage tank, which is on that side, but other than that...
And do you have an idea how many, estimated how many more deliveries we might anticipate? I mean, clearly, we still have some cold weather ahead of us, but...
Yeah, unfortunately, that school uses about between 300 and 400 gallons a day in this cold weather, so that's a 3,000-gallon tank, and we've been going there twice a week.
And so, when that takes place, do we have town officials there? Do we have someone from your department on-site when the delivery comes?
Yeah, there are people there when they come through.
Great. Appreciate your efforts on this. And just last question, did I hear you correctly, tomorrow? Sounds like you're going to wrap up that work tomorrow.
That's for the interceptor, so they're digging the trenches. They're about three feet wide, 25 feet long. They'll drop those in and then backfill over that.
Appreciate your information on this, and I appreciate, I know you've been working with Dr. Brand. I saw that there was a communication that went out a week and a half ago or so, right before vacation, notifying the parents. I can, would imagine that if you're dropping off, if you have a student there, that I'm sure you appreciate being updated, and I would imagine that would continue, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, George, for being here.
Sure.
Kids are back in school.
Kids are back in school.
Everything's working fine. The heat's on, and everything's good.
Yep. Yeah, there was no interruption in services whatsoever. We were able to get this back online before we had that big snowstorm and that status, so everybody was working pretty hard to make sure there was no interruption.
And it's just, and I know we addressed this at the last meeting as well, but it's just important so, to let the residents know that Maya, our insurance carrier, we're going to be paid from the people that made this error to the town. We're not, it's not coming out of our pocket, as we said.
We have an attorney that has been assigned to us by Maya that will be working on that, actually. Susan has been in touch with attorney, or actually with Meyer. I'm not sure she's spoken with the attorney yet, but, so, there was a notice that went out, putting the company on notice that we are going to be seeking recovery of any costs associated with this issue. You know, I would say that, you know, given the nature of the contamination, there is the prospect, as Selectman DePalmer noted, that the septic tank would have to be removed, and to the extent that that happens, unless there's the ability to put some kind of a tight tank in, that the students and staff there would have to be relocated. So that is certainly a possibility at this point.
And that would lead to the next question, that if they have to get relocated, pods, or whatever, to be set up, it's all going to, we're all going to be going after that, that money for them, for us having to relocate those, the children.
Certainly, that is the expectation. Susan, did you want to speak to that?
I did speak to the adjuster today, who let me know that through the Maya's lawyer for subrogation, that they would be going after whoever was responsible for the spill, and that not only would they be responsible up to the limit of coverage that we have with them, they would also go beyond that, and suffer, you know, for reimbursement for any monies the town also had to spend beyond the insurance coverage. So that was good to know, that they would be on our side for the whole, the whole process.
Process. Thank you. And just one last question, Judge, and you may have answered it, Mike. The soil that's around that area that's contaminated, is that going to be removed?
They're going to extract it, yes.
George, how long do we anticipate this project, you know, weather permitting, of course, to take?
Well, talking with the LSP, it could be six to eight weeks, depending on how, like you said, weather has impacted it, and we've already seen some of that now.
Yeah, sure.
But depending on how it goes, so.
Great, thank you. Yeah.
Sorry, Judge, was a question I forgot to ask you, was, the oil tank that we'll be using, is that going to be in-in-ground, or are you...
No, the one we have currently is an above-ground storage tank. It's 3,000 gallons, and it's adjacent to the building, and I believe if you look at your plan, you'll see the little green, that's the 3,000-gallon tank.
Will that be there permanently, or will you be putting another one in the ground?
I would not prefer to put one in the ground, obviously, so we will have to come up with a plan for an above-ground storage tank, which will be part of this whole process. So, the, this tank will remain there until this project is completed, so I'm speculating it'll be warmer weather at that time, and then we'll be looking at putting an above-ground storage tank permanently there.
Judge, thank you for acting so quickly.
Yes, thank you.
Your response on this.
If I could, just as a follow-up.
Sure.
You know, you used the word permanently. I'm hesitant to use that word. I could envision some bold... I could envision some bulldozers over there in the near future, but...
Well, you know, an above-ground storage tank is one of those things that you can use at different locations also. So, if we do get something like that, or depending, if we continue to lease, or, we're not, this is being supplied right now through our insurance, so...
But seriously, I would, and you know this already, but I just want to confirm that, you know, I could anticipate some questions on this next Tuesday, so I would imagine you'd be ready to answer those...
Absolutely.
At the meeting.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much.
Susan, this is one thing I'd like to add, because I did speak to the adjuster this week, the day today, and I know that George is giving the information six to eight weeks, but that is really an estimate for anyone who's listening, just so there are no expectations. He did give me a little longer trajectory than that, and thought maybe it might be into summer. Currently, they get a lot of the contaminated material very quickly, but then they chase the rest of it, and that can be a little bit longer process, and also the evacuation of building may delay that a little bit, they think, and, you know, doing all of that. So, I just wanted to put that out there, just sort of, offset expectations.
And to also be clear, I was talking more about the excavation process. I'm sure there's still gonna be compliance regulations we have to follow, a continuation of monitoring until everything is clear, so...
Of course, it'll be ongoing for some time, but then, hopefully, you know, it's all cleaned up, and we don't have to worry about it, and...
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
It seemed to have kind of leached quickly, you know?
Right, fortunately, we did act fast on this, so...
You did, oh, no, no, that's what I knew.
And it was picked up through our monitoring systems, and my assistant grabbed it pretty quick, and then we had everybody in, so it...
Yeah, no, that's, it's just scary how quickly it can just mitigate right through, you know, so...
Madam Chair, if I can, this is unrelated, but...
Yeah.
Just since we have him here, I do want to compliment you, because it's obvious the town has a bunch of balls in the air right now, and you're quite frankly juggling them all. We really appreciate you...
I appreciate that.
And Michelle's patience, because I know you're serving on every subcommittee we have, so we really appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I second that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judge, we really appreciate it.
Very good.
I would just note that the deductible that we have on this coverage is $500,000. It's not clear at this point whether the cost associated with this will hit that limit or exceed it, but, you know, I just want to make the board aware that there is certainly the prospect that the cost of this cleanup and the associated costs, whether it's, if there is a relocation and pod rental or whatever, could exceed our limit, so that is something that we've had some discussions about, George and Susan and Brian Perry, how we would deal with that in the event that the, the limit is exceeded, because it's my expectation, if the limit is exceeded, notwithstanding our efforts to recoup money, even, you know, the town would have to make the initial payout for whatever costs are incurred, and then recover the money as soon as we can.
Madam Chair, I could ask you, through you, to the manager, you know, in the event that we do have to move children off that site, how does that work? I think, maybe in my time, we can only remember, maybe they evacuated students one time, for whatever reason, there was an incident going on nearby, nothing at the school, but I think, if I recall correctly, they evacuated students at one point to the high school. I forget what, it might have been a bank robbery or something, I forget what, but other than that, I don't think we've ever really relocated kids for quite some time, so what would, what would go, what would, what did that process entail?
Well, so, I mean, the superintendent is looking at options right now, obviously, just to be prepared. That is, that is a work in progress, but it would be, you know, we just need to be prepared in the event that, you know, because of the work that continues to go on there, if it becomes a situation where, you know, it's just not practical with noise and other things going on, to have students and teachers in the building, there just may, as a practical matter, be a need to relocate them. As George indicated, you know, the building is safe to occupy, obviously, we've taken care of the immediate issue in terms of removing the tank, and there is heat and hot water and so on to the building, so it's, currently, it is, there's no issue in that sense, but if the work that needs to be done to remediate the site, you know, gets to a point where it may be practical to relocate the students.
And if I may, any of this work that comes through, through the LSP or any part of this project, again, I will relay that to the school department, and we will, we'll have discussions on that, so they'll be well aware of what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, George, appreciate you coming in, looking after you tonight, and thank you for all the hard work you're doing on multiple projects outside of your daily job.
You're the glue, you're the glue.
Thanks, George.
All right, next, we have a review of a municipal meeting warrant, articles submitted by petition.
So, as you know from a prior meeting, we only received two articles by petition. One is a proposed ban on the use of polystyrene at food establishments and town facilities, and the second is a expression of interest in purchasing town-owned land, which is MAP 77, parcel 26, on Pershing Street, it's a small piece of property. So, those are the only two articles via petition.
All right. Any questions or discussion on that?
So, next is the preliminary discussion on the non-petition articles, and I would say that this is a, clearly a draft, it's a work in progress, there will be some, some changes made to it. I would just start by noting that the expectation is, with respect to Article Two, that we'll be looking to hear reports from the inhabitant bylaw committee, the Wildwood School Committee, the senior center committee, and the town school admin committee. Article Four is the banking article, which authorizes the treasurer-collector to establish accounts. Article Five is the omnibus budget article, which is essentially all of the town and school and Shawshin Tech budgets. Article Six is the article for vehicles of various types, so we have slated three replacement police cruisers in the amount of $151,000. We have proposed the purchase of a replacement ambulance, $350,000. Performing corrosion prevention on our tower, fire tower truck, in the amount of $110,000. Under Public Works, the purchase of a heavy-duty 10-wheel dump truck with plow. This is assigned to the Highway Division at a cost of $202,000. Purchase of a heavy-duty dump truck with plow and sander, again, assigned to Highway, $198,000. And then the purchase of one heavy-duty 1-ton utility body truck with plow, which would be assigned to Parks and Grounds, in the amount of $95,000. And then, Public Works Department, the purchase of one replacement aerial platform truck, Article Seven is for the purchase of dispatch recorder for the public safety dispatch system at a cost of $45,000. Article Eight is the third and final phase of the communication upgrade, again, at the public safety dispatch center. The cost here is $450,000. Article Nine is to seek funds for the installation of traffic control devices at Route 62 and at the public safety building. This is, the request is $400,000. You'll recall that we also have funds that were directed to us through the state in the amount of, I believe it's $70,000, which will cover the cost of the engineering associated with that. Article Ten is to replace the town's phone system with a voice-over IP system, and the amount is $45,000. Article Eleven is to appropriate funds for the intersection of Shawshin Ave, Hopkins Street, and Lake Street. This is, the traffic lights at that intersection cost $550,000. Article Twelve is to appropriate funds for the resurfacing of the Frank Kelly Track at the high school, $520,000. Article Thirteen, to appropriate funds for resurfacing of the parking lot at the Wilmington Middle School. This would be just the first phase. $200,000 is requested. Article Fourteen, this is, you recall, is an annual, an amount at this point, for appropriation for compliance with our municipal separate stormwater system program, essentially, stormwater issues associated with our NPT's permit, $50,000 is requested for that. We have $40,000 that we're looking for to demolish the home at 64 Wildwood Street. We're also looking for $40,000 for various upgrades to the cemetery, the Wildwood Cemetery. This would include some treatment of the grassed areas and general upgrades to the cemetery. Article Seventeen, these funds, you may recall, we've received them for the last few years, are come from the Uber and Lyft money that, that communities around the state receive. The amount is $3,886.80, clearly dropped off as a result of COVID, but this would be directed to crack sealing our roads throughout town. I'm not sure how many roads it's gonna cover, it's probably not a lot at this point. Article Eighteen is to fund the town's sewer division. You'll recall, a few years ago, this was established as an enterprise fund, so essentially the revenue derived from those who are sewer rate payers pays for the cost with, for running the sewer system. $3,601,290 is the amount. Article Nineteen is for the funding of a, relocating the underground panel for our sewer pump station. It's currently located on Main Street, it's actually in front of the Market Basket. You may recall, this was, a similar article was requested last year, I believe the amount was 40,000. It turns out, when we went through the bid process, the bids came in much higher, so we're looking for an additional $45,000 that we would add on to the prior appropriation to cover that cost. Article Twenty is to seek funds for the replacement of approximately 24,000 square feet of roofing at the Shawshin School. The amount is 825,000, and we are looking to seek funding from that through the capital stabilization account. Article Twenty-One is to appropriate funds for the design work associated with replacing 19,124 square feet of roofing at the West Intermediate School. The estimated cost for the design would be $50,000. Article Twenty-Two is to seek funds to complete the design work associated with two oil-fired boilers at the Woburn Street School, and the design cost is estimated to be $80,000. Next article, Article Twenty-Three, I had placed on the warrant, but in subsequent conversations with town council, because Article Thirty-One, last year's town meeting, already authorized the potential lease of property at the former Textron property, we do not need this article, so this can be removed. Article Twenty-Four is seeking funds, this is a school article, for replacing existing projectors and interactive projectors at the Woburn Street School, Boutwell and Shawshin, $80,000. Article Twenty-Five is seeking to also replace projectors at the Wilmington High School in the amount of $125,000. Article Twenty-Six is to continue the replacement and upgrade of the public address system in the early childhood centers, elementary schools, and intermediate schools. The amount is 24,000. Article Twenty-Seven is to seek funds for replacing network switches at six elementary schools, $117,000. Article Twenty-Seven, to see if the town will appropriate funds for wireless networks at the six elementary schools, $54,000. Article Twenty-Nine, you'll recall, this has been on the warrant for a number of years now. This is to essentially transfer money that comes through Verizon and Comcast for the fees that people pay associated with PEG access. These funds would be in the amount of 525,000 that would be transferred to Wilmington TV, the local access channel cable TV, so these are not through the tax levy. Article Thirty is to appropriate funds for our other post-employment liability trust fund. The amount proposed is $1 million. Article Thirty-One is to put additional funds into our capital stabilization account in the amount of $1 million. Article Thirty-Two is to seek funds to essentially prepay on the middle-sex retirement system, the additional amount being $1,500,000. Article Thirty-Three, this is also included every year, and this is, we don't have a number at this point, but as we get towards town meeting, and the intent is to be able to transfer from one department to another, if we need funds to cover overages in certain accounts, that will be determined. Article Thirty-Four, the sum of $50,000 is recommended for supplementing the costs associated with the July 4th celebration. Article Thirty-Five, to support the Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, $8,000, and as noted, Article Thirty-Six is $1,500 to support the VFW in the American Legion. Article Thirty-Seven, these also have been on the agenda for a number of years, the first being to support our compost bin revolving account, so you'll recall, people can purchase the bins, the money cycles back into this revolving account. The amount there is $4,500, and the septic disposal revolving account, $200,000, for those who wish, that are unable to get financing otherwise, they can go through the Board of Health and obtain a low-interest loan to finance replacing a septic system.
Oh, that was 200,000?
200,000, yep. These next three, 38, 39, and 40, are all associated with work that will be coming up in the next couple of years, associated with the Lowell Street and Woburn Street intersection. You'll recall that we have funds through the... You'll recall that we have funds through the state, Mass DOT, to do the reconstruction there. There'll be some lane changes, a turning lane, for example, on Lowell Street, turning into Woburn Street. So the first article essentially authorizes the appropriation of funds for temporary easements. We're not anticipating that we will need to incur costs. These temporary easements are relatively small in nature, and we anticipate that funds won't be needed, but we're including this just in case. Article 39 essentially authorizes the board to acquire those temporary easements. And Article 40 is, essentially authorizes the town, through the Board of Selectmen, to accept the alterations in the layout of that intersection, once that is done. Article 41 is to see if the town will accept the provisions of Mass General, Chapter 90, Section 28, allowing the town manager to designate or appoint a parking clerk. So establishing this position will provide the town with additional tools in order to recover funds, so that if someone is, fails to pay their parking ticket right now, there's really not a whole lot of recourse the town has. But with the adoption of this, the town would be able to, through the parking clerk, notify the registry, and it gets put on their record, so to speak, so they have to pay the parking ticket before they are able to re-register their vehicle.
Through the chair. Is this, is this the part-time position going to full-time that was discussed before?
No.
Is this a new position?
Well, it's a, it will not be, we will not be hiring someone new to assume this role, someone currently, who has yet to be determined, but it will be someone in the existing staff that will be designated as a parking clerk.
Okay.
This next one is with regard to dog licenses, so essentially, if this is accepted, individuals age 70 and over would not be required to pay the fees associated with registering your, or licensing your dog. Article 43 is, the town will vote to pursue into Chapter 3, Section 28 of the inhabitant bylaws, to name the corner of Arlene Avenue and Salem Street as Richard K., quote, Dick, unquote, Hayden Memorial's Corner, in honor of Richard K. Hayden. And I don't know if, Selectman, Ben, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just was approached by the family, trying to do something nice for Dick. As most of us know, Dick served not only in the Marines, but served our community for many, many years. He was a friend to all, and that's actually where he lived on that street there, and we think this would be a fitting tribute, similar to what we did for Mr. Gillis last year, if you recall, at the corner of Federal Street and Liberty Street. This would be very similar, and I think it'd be a nice gesture for Mr. Hayden.
And the next one, Article 44, this was a request that came into the board from a neighbor down in this area, but it's to see if the town will vote to name the Hathaway Acre Conservation Trail as Officer John, quote, Jack, unquote, Maguire Memorial Trail. Again, you'll recall that Mr. Maguire has been a longtime resident of Wilmington, was unfortunately killed in the line of duty as a Woburn police officer. This next article, Article 45, it was, I placed it on the, on the warrant for discussion. This really came out of a discussion that was a Zoom session through the MSBA, was sponsored by the MSBA, but it addressed the issue of the limits that the town has when it is pursuing ballot questions. For example, if the town is, you know, going forward was to put a question on the ballot about exempting the costs associated with a school from the limits of two and a half, there is certain constraints as to what the town can use in terms of its own resources to promote that kind of an article, or it could be any number of articles that would appear as a ballot question. So this was offered as a potential tool that would allow the town to be able to make the case, so to speak, for a particular project or other item that it had on the ballot. Again, in further conversation with Town Council, it's my conclusion that it's probably not particularly advantageous for us to include this on the warrant. Essentially, if this is adopted, what it would require is that any ballot questions of any sort, whether they're financial or otherwise, would require that the, essentially, almost similar to what you get when there's a state ballot question, you get that little red book that has the write-up in terms of the pros for the, for the ballot question and the cons. The town would have to create a similar document that would reflect, you know, what the virtues of the project are, what the vices, if you will, or the negatives of the project are. And then the Town Council would also have to be involved in terms of preparing a write-up that summarizes the nature of the question, and essentially describes the effect of a yes or no vote. And then that information would have to be disseminated or mailed out to all of our registered voters. It's my, after further review of this, it's my conclusion, and talking to Town Council, he said that, from his experience, there aren't, at least the communities that he deals with, many communities that adopt this, because it does require a fair amount of time and effort to go through this process, and, you know, I think there may be other avenues that the town can pursue if there is a ballot question at some point. So I guess at this point, I would recommend that this one be not included in the final Article 46 is a, an article, again, addressing the issue that was raised some months ago, to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. This article is intended to address that through making changes in the Town Managers Act, so that it would change the reference from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. The next one, Article 47, would do the same thing with respect to the inhabitant bylaws. It would change the references from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. I would note here, and it's not shown in the, in the article, in the warrant here, there's, there's actually two additional articles that will be included, and those are articles associated with the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee. So as you know, they've been working very, for a very long time, to prepare some articles that will essentially make the inhabitant bylaws more readable and, and also make some changes of content. So this article is included here, specifically addressing the inhabitant bylaws. It will also be addressed as one of the articles in, that are being recommended by the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee. The reason I'm suggesting it be included in both places is because the article that the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee is recommending lists this as multiple other changes that are being proposed for the inhabitant bylaws. So it's kind of a bit of belt and suspenders, so to speak. If, for whatever reason, town meeting decided not to adopt the multiple changes that are being proposed in the inhabitant bylaw subcommittee's recommendations, this could still stand. And then Article 48 is essentially making the same changes to the reference to the Board of Selectmen within the zoning bylaws. Article 49 is a planning board article, and this is seeking to rezone from general industrial and general business to mixed use, essentially the area that runs between Waltham Street and Jefferson Road. This is certainly something that's been discussed for some period of time, and, you know, I think the, the effort would be to try to, you know, reduce, or over time, change the makeup there. We have some warehousing there, which I think, in my estimation, really doesn't, is probably not the appropriate place to be in, in that kind of a zone. So that's, that's the proposal there. Article 50, again, planning board sponsored, is to establish some design standards for the mixed-use zone, which would essentially try to create a more pedestrian-oriented environment, and be very specific in terms of the types of requirements that the town would like to see in terms of a mixed-use zone. Article 51 is really intended to just correct a minor oversight. So you recall, a few years ago, pet care facilities were amended to include neighborhood mixed use. It was referenced in the first paragraph, but you'll see in the sub-paragraph where it's underlined, we're looking to insert that, because it was, was not included there, and it should be. So it's really a, kind of a clerical error of sorts. And then Article 52 is essentially intended to require that for smaller-sized parking lots, they also be required to include shade trees and other measures intended to reduce the heat island effects, so to speak, that we have in, in some areas. This is part of, you'll recall that the planning department and engineering were involved in a municipal vulnerability study a year or so ago, and one of the steps to trying to deal with, with that is to make some zoning changes in terms of how parking lots are dealt with and requiring a greater level of green space, if you will. Article 53, this is the first of the two zoning petition articles, which seeks to ban polystyrene. And then the last article in this current version is the article to acquire a piece of town-owned property, map 77, parcel 7 to 26. And as I mentioned, the articles associated with the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee would also be proposed to be included in here, which make changes, both in terms of kind of clerical, as well as more substantive changes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, through you, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, I missed the price tag on Article number 11. Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. Article 11.
$550,000.
Thank you.
That's right. That's 550 is, that's coming from free cash, or proposed to come from free cash, and Article 12 would be free cash.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ball.
Next, we will move on to communications.
The first item under communications is just a, an update on the comment letter. Valerie has, has a comment letter in draft that's going off to Town Council. She was also able to get an extension from mass housing of 15 days. So the plan is for Council to take a look at the draft comment letter as soon as Council gets it back to us, which is expected to be later in the week. We will then get it to the Board of Selectmen and ask that the board be able to provide any comments. You might have a back to Valerie by the 7th, so that we can get it turned around and off to mass housing by the deadline. Next is just updating the board in terms of the mask policy, change in mask policy. It's with regard to municipal non-school buildings. As of today, the change is essentially that anyone who is unvaccinated is, it's recommended that they wear a mask, but it's at their discretion. Certainly, the numbers are low, and they seem to be staying low, which is a good thing. And then with regard to the senior center, just have an update here. The group, I think, made a lot of progress. Lee Morissette from Dietz and Company, the architect, presented a couple of options to the group. One, this is with regard to the senior center. One, the building would have been located, or would be located, in the back end of the parcel, next to St. Dorothy's. The other, the parcel would be, the building would be located closer to the front of the parcel, essentially about the same setback as St. Dorothy's Church currently has. There were a number of points made in terms of the pros and cons on each. Some of the more notable pros was, or cons with respect to having the building set back is that the patio area would essentially be facing the backyards of some of the residents in that area. There was also concern about a, the way the traffic flow would be set up there, there would essentially be a requirement that the drop-off, people who are dropping off kind of go through a loop and then circle back around to get to the main parking lot, which would require kind of a crossover, a bit of a potential conflict in terms of traffic. So the committee did not take any kind of a vote, but the, appears that the preference is for the building to be located closer to the front of the parcel. There was also a lot of discussion about interior layout, and still some unresolved issues there that are being worked on by the architect. And then he presented some pictures that he had obtained from the historical commission for the board, for the committee to consider in terms of trying to identify the type of theme that the building should have, whether it should be a contemporary building or historic building. So all those things are in the mix. And then the, just attached to that is the most recent senior center building committee update, provides some details on the latest information. And then the next one, I'll defer to Selectmen Kyra, is an update on the high school, I mean, the town hall, school admin, building committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I won't read this verbatim, we'll just kind of synopsize it. We met on Wednesday, February 16th, the Town Hall and School Administration Committee, along with the OPM and the architect, Johnson Roberts, and the primary individuals, Philip O'Brien and Stuart Roberts. Judge Hooper, who we noted today, is a man who's doing a lot of good work for the town. He, he's the chairman of, of this committee, and he spoke with Ken Lord, who's the board chairman of WCTV, to get their requirements, and they're not looking to add any additional space, they just need an area for their, for their equipment in order to produce the good works that they do. Missing from the meeting was Paul Rigerio, the Assistant Superintendent of Administration Finance in the School Department, Designee, School Committee Member Jesse Finley. They had a conflict that evening and couldn't attend, but the committee did go through the specs and the space requirements, not only for the town portion, but for the the specs and the space requirements, not only for the town portion, but for the school portion. And it was determined that the OPM and Judge, and possibly the town manager, will be meeting with Paul Rigerio and Jesse Finley, and the superintendent, to go through the requirements and to make sure that the footage and the design layout is what they require. It was a positive meeting. We saw illustrations of the diagrams. The first one was a building into the slope of the Swain Green area. Then he showed us two other buildings that would be in front, more towards the Fourth of July building. Consensus seemed to be, from the committee, that they liked the idea of the building put into the slope, where it would use the top elevation for a way in and out for the employees. And I did note that he left an area of that slope for the kids to do some sledding in the wintertime, so it was pretty good. And then just at the end, there's going to be some newsletter information coming out. We haven't received any final edits or drafts on that, Mr. Manager, yet.
I've not seen, no.
And once, once things are more formalized, there'll be other design information to be sent out to the public.
Awesome, thank you.
Can I ask?
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Kyra, just one question, I'm a little confused on this. How many parking spaces will, if any, will be lost for school students?
The way the, the design up against the slope, there'd be, I believe, three hundred and five parking spaces. And it's not projected that any, any spots would be lost for the use for the students.
Thank you.
So there should be plenty of room for that. The other design that they put in there, which I think is important to say, is that one area of the parking facility will be without trees, and so that it would be more open for future events, like a July fourth festival area. And then another portion of the parking lot would be more landscaped, closer to the building itself. And one other thing that we went over that I just noticed was the inner design of the building, the layout of the building. We kind of flipped some of the areas to get them, the, like the town clerk and the treasurer were away from the main entrance. We flipped them so that the areas that had the most foot traffic were closer to that, to that door opening. And it worked out really well. The architect was, was really good, so.
So, under assumption only, I know you're still in the, you know, final stages of it and everything, a Fourth of July celebration, it wouldn't affect that as, that much, would it?
I, it's hard to answer that question, because, I mean, it may affect the amount of rides. I mean, there's going to be an effect, you know, no matter what. I mean, right now, we have an entire parking lot that's open.
Right.
This will not be an entire parking lot that will be open. So it may affect some of the rides that they can bring in. And the way it's designed right now is that the, the bizel school is remaining as it is. But we did ask him to see what it would look like if the, if into the slope it moved over towards the bizel, and with that being eliminated to add more parking. You know, and that's not to get everybody, you know, going crazy about eliminating the bizel. I mean, we want to make sure that every option is looked at, so that someone doesn't say, hey, you know, why didn't you look at this option? So we can eliminate that.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay.
Next, under Board to Consider is establishing a date for the town manager evaluation. Just note that the, the contract, I think, in large measure, kind of lays out the timelines there.
I think we should just, we just signed this contract, so I mean, I think we are, we should stick to what it is, section fourteen.
Right.
That each year during the month of June, board will meet the town manager, discuss and establish specifically new goals. And then during the month of July, each year, each member of board will submit a written evaluation of the town manager's performance to the chairman.
Just a point of clarification, on the item number six, establishing the date. So are you looking for a specific date in June?
We could do that.
We should.
Well, a specific date, so June is when we would meet with the town manager, July is when we would submit the evaluation.
Okay, so it's specific. We only meet once in July, traditionally, so you want?
Yes.
Right, Madam Chair, if I could, and when this was established, and I give kudos to Jonathan Eaton and Ed Loud, who came up with the evaluation, it was for each, you know, we would discuss in June, the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
I know, probably our last meeting in June. And then we would submit to you, or the chairperson at that time, it may not be you, because there's a changeover.
Right, a changeover, yeah.
Those written reports, for that person to compile everything.
Right.
So as not to violate the open meeting law.
Right.
So that's the way it was structured, so.
So for June, I think that is a good point, we should say the last board of select meeting in June, we should meet with the town manager, correct? There should be an executive session, we'll meet with them. Does that make sense?
Only thing I would say is that that would be the first part of the process, right?
That, that's right.
Right.
So.
Oh, so maybe it's the first meeting in June.
The Board to Consider item, whatever we vote on tonight should be very specific in the fact that it's establishing a date to meet with the town manager.
Right.
And thereafter, you will solicit, who, the chair at the time will solicit feedback, which will be then compiled.
In July, right. So I would propose that we meet with town manager prior to the first board of select meeting in June. Is it, is the goal here to meet as a group with the town manager? If that's the way it's reading here, right?
Also, Madam Chair, I think my understanding is that the intent is in June for the board to meet with me to discuss and establish goals for the upcoming year.
Yep.
And then the meeting during the month of July, members would submit your critique
Yep.
to the chair for consideration. And then it goes on to note that the town manager should be, or has, shall be provided a written draft of the composite evaluation, at least twenty days, twenty calendar days prior to any meeting scheduled to discuss the composite evaluation. So I guess as I see it, the board will, in July, complete the form that is part of the, is an attachment here.
Submit it to the chair.
Submit it to the chair, and then you'll, or whoever the chair is, will do it, develop a composite, and then I'll have an opportunity to, to review that and have a conversation, I guess, with the chair before it ultimately goes back to a posted meeting.
So if I could make a suggestion.
Yep.
I would suggest the first meeting in June, which would then allow more time in between June and the meeting in July.
I agree.
That the meeting, so I guess in terms of tonight's business, establishing a date for the town manager evaluation, which would begin on the first meeting in June.
Yep.
Thirteenth.
Which I believe this year is the thirteenth. And then proceed from there, based on the contract.
I agree.
In July, we only have one meeting, correct?
Traditionally.
Traditionally.
Right, so.
We've yet to establish that. That's going to be coming up, I think, right? Establishing the summer dates?
Yeah. So, I agree. I think it should happen at the first select meeting in June.
The only reason I offer that is, it appears to me that the second meeting in June is June twenty-seventh, which is obviously pretty close to July, right? And then you would imagine that most.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Most folks are busy the following week.
Yep.
And then the meeting will quickly creep up on folks, and that's why I think if we started on the thirteenth, the process by meeting with the manager then, gives us two additional weeks.
And then we also need to, well, yeah, and I think we should, it should probably have some guidance in the month of July, too. Well, I guess the chair can determine that, when a date to submit.
Right, yeah. And it allows you the twenty-seventh to fall back on as well, if you need to.
Yeah, no, I agree. It should be in the first, at the first meeting in June.
And then I think we'll be, traditionally, we will vote on when the meeting in July is sometime in the spring, so that'll be coming up, I imagine.
Okay. All right, so.
Kevin's hoping for the eleventh, I think.
What's the eleventh?
Wedding anniversary.
Yours or mine?
Seven-eleven.
Mine's October.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we establish the first board of select meeting in the month of June, to begin the town manager, manager evaluation by meeting with the manager, and then proceeding forward based on what's outlined in the contract.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor? Okay. Go be it.
Okay, next, under Board to Consider is establishing guidelines for development proposals for the board. So this, just included this memo to the board that was initially provided back on the twenty-eighth of January. I know there was some, there has been discussion at a couple of points in the last year or so about potentially bringing developers in. Certainly, the board, it's the board's prerogative to take that on. I would just like to have some specificity in terms of if that is going to be the case. Are we talking about commercial developments? Are we talking about residential developments? What scale? You know, I think one of the things that the board should be mindful of is that the developers or proponents of particular projects, I think in many cases, will be inclined to bring their engineers and consultants in, which obviously is a cost to them, but they'll want to have the folks there that can kind of explain the particulars. I think the board should just be, give consideration to whether that's, what effect that's going to have if, if proponents need to go to another session before a board that doesn't essentially have any permit granting authority.
I personally do not want to see every, you know, proposal brought here. I mean, we have no say in it, so to speak, you know, we don't take a vote on it. I mean, I think it's important to bring some of them, you know, up, because I think when we need to bring it to the residents and, you know, make sure they are aware of things that are happening, I'm fine with that. But I don't think it's our place to, you know, if developers in town or wants to come to town, they shouldn't be meeting with us. But I'll run it up, too.
Let me see.
Yeah.
I agree and disagree with you on that. I believe that if it's a large project, whether it's commercial or residential, that's going to affect the town, that this is a good forum, that a developer can come in, present their, their design, their design, or what they want to do, as Princeton did, as we had West Street do. It's a forum where the public can see the whole project in its whole, even though we do not have, if it's a project that we do not have authorization on, it still brings us to a point where we can understand it better, more clear. We can get clarification on issues we might have on questions, which I think would just benefit the town. And I'm not, I'm not saying bring in, if someone wants to build three houses, don't get me wrong. But if they're a major project, I believe that, that they should. We should be able to let them show the public what they want, what they're going to build, and see if the public's comfortable with that at four other board hearings. I was very impressed with Princeton when they came in, and what are they doing? They're telling you a story at that point in time, that's all. They're telling you what they want to build. That doesn't mean that that's what they're going to build, but at least the general public will be able to view this and see it, and have a better understanding of what the project is. And again, I'm not, I'm not talking someone's coming in who's going to build three houses. I'm not talking someone who's going to build a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot office building, one-floor office building. I'm talking large projects. I was very happy to see West and Princeton, simply because I was able to understand it more, to see what they, what they were going to build. Granted, Princeton, we had a say. West, we don't have a say. But still, now I knew, so I could present it to people who are asking me what this was all about. They saw it and would either be for it or against it. At least the public will have a venue to see what the project is.
I mean, they do also present to the planning board, I mean, those are public meetings as well.
They are, but I think we have a, we would have a better, they'd have a better venue here to see it without listening to discussion, just seeing the project presented as whole. And I know, like Princeton, I was not on the board at the time, but when I sat through the meeting, and when I was leaving, I heard comments, and I made comments, that I thought it was too, too big at the time, but it also gives a developer a feeling on where the public is on these. There's other projects in town that I believe should have been brought before us, that whether we have a vote or not, the public would have been able to see and been able to resolve maybe the issues they had with the project at the time. And I believe it's just more open, open, I believe it's more open government. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having lived through this a couple times, I think that there's a couple things that come to my mind. Number one, obviously, we want to be transparent about what information we have. And for the majority of time, when it comes to the development project, we are privy to the information that we see when we attend the planning board, or the Board of Appeals, and or whether you go in person, as I have in the past, or watched on TV, because I think, you know, Mr. DePaul makes a good point in that we do get questions regardless of the project. We get questions as Selectmen members of what's going on. So it's important that we tune into that. As far as somebody coming before us, I want to make sure that we're crystal clear with residents. We don't want to confuse anybody or mislead them into thinking that we have any involvement that we may not. You know, it was mentioned at the previous meeting that we saw a presentation, but at the end of the day, we didn't have really any authority, granting authority, permitting authority over that particular project. We were here almost as a sounding board in that particular situation. So I would be reluctant, because I think it can be confusing for folks, well, I saw this person in front of your board, I watched your meeting, and I saw that developer explaining this, what's going on with that, why did you do this, why didn't you do that? You could assume those type of questions. The other thing I want to make sure we're doing is that we'd be remaining, we're trying to be a business-friendly community, where we want to attract good businesses to come to Wilmington to help our tax base. By adding another layer of red tape, and I guess for lack of a better term, is that being cost prohibitive to the developer or to the group who may be trying to do something? We have bylaws in place, there are laws in place that dictate who can determine what will take place in terms of development. We have a regulatory process in place. I'm not sure if we should be inserting ourselves, therefore maybe deterring a good business from wanting to come to Wilmington, and say, well, jeez, I'd like to go to Wilmington and have my business there, but I don't want to get in front of the board of Selectmen because I'm afraid of what the feedback might be, and it just seems like it might work. Now, that's a hypothetical.
No, right, of course, yeah.
So I want to be, those are the two things. So I want to be, those are the two things that stand out to me when considering this. I'll preface it by saying that every situation is unique and, you know, did entertain Princeton when I was chair of 2019. That did have an affordable housing component and it was obviously a friendly 40B situation where the town was going to partner with them and therefore we ultimately made the decision to bring them before us. But I would be hesitant to have all development projects in the future come here. I'd also say that respectfully, that, you know, large project is a relative term, right? Someone might say, well, four homes next to me is large development, where another might say, no, it's not. I think that's kind of a relative term that's up for debate. So I would agree with you, Madam Chair, that I would be hesitant to have projects come before us because of those two reasons. Number one, let's be crystal clear to residents in terms of who has the authority over which projects. And number two, let's make sure we're business friendly, so businesses want to come to Wilmington and help our tax base. And for anybody, I would encourage my colleagues who have questions or concerns about a project is to attend those particular regulatory process meetings and voice your opinion.
And I think by those meetings, too, you know, that's our source of information, you know, planning board and the information we get. And that should, you know, satisfy our knowledge in order to speak to any residents that do approach us. And if we don't know anything, we can certainly go out and get that information from the planning board or whomever and relay that information. You know, maybe, maybe we need to have more, I don't know, social media that, you know, to pump up the planning board meetings, I don't know. But I feel the same way. I think it's when it's necessary for someone to come before the board, I'm all for that, like in the, you know, the 40Bs have been a situation. But I think there are, you know, many residents who don't know, just because they don't know that the Board of Selectmen do not have any, you know, purview over what goes where. I mean, obviously, we are a conduit to get information out and answer questions and we can do that anytime. Yeah.
And to that point, if I could interrupt you, is that I think it's completely appropriate for any member of the Board of Selectmen to request through the manager to the planning board and say, hey, could you give us a memo, a briefing memo on this particular project? Members are getting questions and want to make sure we're providing the right feedback. So if you haven't been able to attend a meeting or watch it on TV and you want, and I think it's totally appropriate for this board to maybe request just a briefing memo from the planning board if a particular project piques your interest.
I think that's a good idea, so we can at least be.
I've talked to developers and as they say to me, they said they don't really care because they know we don't have the authority. And they would feel comfortable just presenting their project in the infancy stages so that the public is more aware of what's going on. If you ever sit there, and I know we all have, watching planning board or conservation, you can get convoluted at times because they're dealing with specifics. All I'm looking for is an open forum, what I believe we should be looking for is an open forum, just for someone to come in and say, this is what we'd like to do. We've made our applications to the planning board, but we just wanted to present it to the board as a whole so that they can see what we are doing. That's what, and again, like I said, I have talked to some developers who have said, as long as, if you don't have, if you don't have the authority to vote on a project, as long as that's made clear at the beginning, they said they had, they would have no problem coming in and just saying boom, boom, boom. It's a one-night shot. They can present their project. And I know there's a few projects in town that I would have felt more comfortable with that came before our board, even though we didn't have an authority on it, because you heard all different stories on what they were going to be. And at least if they're here in the beginning, you know basically what it's going to be. Does a project change? Of course it changes. But the basics stay the same. And that was my feeling on that. And I got some good responses from people who said they enjoy seeing it on the West Street project because it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. And some were more pro for it and more, some were against it, even stronger against it. But at least it's a venue for them, for the public to see. And that's what I was looking for.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, one, I would also urge caution in that we have a Board of Appeals, which is appointed by the Board of Selectmen specifically so they do not feel political pressure from an electorate, right? And so if this scenario was to play out where a developer or a project proposal was to come before us and, you know, five members of the board, which is hypothetically, were really strongly in favor of a project, well, as a member of a Board of Appeals, I'm thinking, geez, the people who appointed me to this position really feel passionately one way. I'd better vote this way, otherwise, and therefore kind of adding political pressure that we've appointed them to avoid. So I would be cautious about that.
Well, if we were, if we had seen, see a presentation, if we see a presentation and it's not in the selectmen's venue to vote on it, when we have, we should stipulate it and no one, no selectmen should come out when they're viewing these and saying, I love that project. I love this project. I don't like that project.
Why they're coming to present to us? I mean, they're going to want feedback.
No, they're.
They are, they're going to want feedback.
They're going to want it from the public, though.
Yeah, but they're also going to want it from, I think, from sitting here.
So many things are hidden at times in projects that go on in this town that if the public had a venue right off the bat, there would be more of a support, either support or rejection. And again, I found no one asking me, did you have a vote on West Street after West Street was here? They all, the people that I spoke to understood that we had no vote, but that it was being presented so that the board could get more of an understanding on what was there and also the public had a better idea on what was going to be built. And again, like I said, I didn't get any feedback, negative feedback from developers. I even had a couple attorneys said it's not a bad idea. And just you have to preface right off the bat that the Board of Selectmen does not have any authority over here. And I mean, if I see a project I like, that I'm a supporter of, and I go to any of the meetings, I don't go as selectman. I go as a resident of the town. I don't go as a selectman. I'm there as, you know, I'm a taxpayer in town and this is what I feel on this project. And I've done it and I would continue doing it. But that's my feeling about it. We're all here to get it squared away. I know the town manager, I believe, does not like the idea.
Well, I don't, I just want some direction. If the board wants to do this, I'll do what the board wants, but it's very difficult when I don't have any specificity as to the scale of the projects or the type of the projects. You will recall that there was a bit of an issue that came about a couple of years ago when one project did not come before the board. And at the time, it was based upon concerns by the chair at the time that the board would be tagged with endorsing the project. So I think that's one consequence the board has to bear in mind, that if you are going to have projects come in, you may have one proponent who doesn't get invited in saying, well, how come I didn't have an opportunity to come before the board when somebody else did regardless of the size of their project versus another project? So, but again, if the board wants to take this on, I'm okay to work with it, but I need to know what the parameters are.
Yeah. I'm a little hesitant. I would agree with the chairman and Selectman Bendel. I think as, for as much as we say we're not the regulatory board, it's not in our purview, there is still, we're still setting up confusion. I understand what you're saying, Gary. It doesn't matter if you say it at the beginning, in the middle, or the end. It's going to set up confusion with the residents that we're supporting a particular project. Because as Chairman said, that they're going to be looking for our opinion. And that's what, that's what has happened. Now, if it's in our purview, Princeton Properties was in our purview because we had to take a vote because it was a favorable 40B. So we saw that presentation. Analog devices, we provided a tip and they came in with their project because it was in our purview to permit that, right? So I guess the issue is, I don't think that we should be going out soliciting developers to come in here. But, because that's what it's sounding like to me. But if a developer wants to come into us and present a project, I think it makes sense for the chairman to review that with the town manager and to do what took place and survey the board to see if it makes sense for us to have that particular project come before us. And, you know, not, it's just a slippery slope we're heading into. And, you know, not all projects fit a particular, you know, criteria. So I think we look at each individual project as it comes, if that particular developer wants to come before us, and we'd have to make a determination at that time. You know, I don't think we can make a blanket policy on this, to be honest with you. But I just am hesitant in having all developers, and as Selectman Bendel said, if I were a developer putting in three houses, I would consider that a large development. You know, other neighbors would, as opposed to putting, you know, a warehouse over at Textron. You know, there's a warehouse development going on over there. That's a large project. But we have no regulatory authority over that. But we've been working with them in order to obtain the use of the recreational field over there. They've been good neighbors, so to speak, or good partners. So I'm hesitant in bringing in all these projects. I think it will set up for confusion. I think we just go on a case-by-case.
That's all I was looking for, is a case-by-case.
Yeah, I'm not for suspension guidelines. I think it just, I think it should stay as it is, that if 40Bs come, situations come up that, you know, need to, as Kevin said, you know, that need or requesting, that it goes before the chair to discuss with the town manager, you know, survey the board, and we make a decision if, you know, we think it's appropriate to have them in. And maybe that is the guideline, you know? But I, I'm not for making this a, you know, something we do.
I make a motion, we table this.
Okay.
You know, if we need a motion to move on this or not at this time, and we'll just, you know, stay the course, so to speak, as we've been doing so far, as far as I'm concerned.
Just to clarify, Mr. Kyra, did you want to take no action or you wanted to?
Well, if we table it to no date certain, it's basically no action. But if you want to do it that way, I have no problem. I'll make a motion to take no action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Good conversation.
Okay, next is a request of Anita D'Leo, Performing Arts Department, Wilmington Public Schools, to use the Town Common and Gazebo on Thursday, May 19, 2022, with a rain date of the 24th, from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the purpose of the high school honors jazz band concert. And again, on Tuesday, May 31st, rain date of June 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00, for the purpose of the elementary strings orchestra concert. There are no conflicts on the dates, no issues.
Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So voted.
Next, a board to consider request, the presidents of Friends of the Wilmington Baseball, for Wilmington High School Baseball, to conduct a fundraiser car wash at the parking lot, municipal parking lot, next to July 4th Building, May 22nd, from 9:00 to noon. No conflicts.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So moved.
Next is a board to consider request of Julie Breen, on behalf of the Friends of Field Hockey, for the Wilmington High School Girls Field Hockey Team, to conduct a fundraising car wash at the municipal parking lot on Sunday, October 2nd, 2022, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, October 9th.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, I think we're going to put car washes out of business in town.
I know, right?
Next is a board to consider request of John Romano, President of Wilmington Sons of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot and 4th of July Building for the annual antique and collector's car show on Sunday, October 16th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, October 23rd.
Have a motion?
So moved? Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? So moved. All right, now we will move to public comments.
Oh, I've got, did you want to take an action? So, fund board to consider action to prompt the mass MBTA to improve safety at the rail crossings. The chair and I talked about this, just in the event that there was a desire to have further discussion on steps that can be taken to draw our attention to the issue here. You know, we've certainly had regular contact with our legislative delegation. One of the things I had talked to the chair about is a prospect of sending a letter to, not only to our state legislative, well, actually directing a letter to the general manager and copying our state legislative delegation, our congressional delegation and the governor. I don't get the sense, and I, you know, could be wrong here, but it doesn't seem like the level of attention that this merits is being provided. You know, we seem to, clearly, the first incident that really drew everyone's attention to this was a stark example of, you know, catastrophic error. But it seems we're seeing some measure of frequency of other instances that, you know, fortunately, to this point, have not led to any injury. But it is very disconcerting, I think, to everybody that there's some question as to whether you can cross rail crossings safely.
I'll make a motion that we put a letter in as the town manager directed.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'd like discussion on that, please.
I believe what we should do right now is stick with our State House delegation. They're working, I have spoken to Senator Tarr, Representative Robinson, and Representative Gordon personally on a number of occasions. They are working feverishly on this. And if I, I must say, I'm impressed with what they're doing so far. They're in the process of setting up a meeting, a technology meeting with the T, to find out what their, what their actual plans of attack are on it. And I believe that before we start sending letters out, again, we should have a meeting with them where they're leading the, they're championing this for us. As far as not being as maybe interested or anything, I can't see that at all. I, what I see is, I see them all being very, very concerned with it, knowing that they have things they have to do, but they're also dealing with the T. And they're set, and they're. And their set, and their, their focus is, let's get the technology down now to, to find what is going to be best for the town of Wilmington. They are very concerned. And like I said, I've spoke to all of them on a number of occasions. They're, they're as angry and aggravated as they were when everything first happened. It's priority to them. And I feel that if we stay the course with the State House delegation, that we will see a resolution sooner than later. By sending letters out, sometimes can aggravate a situation. And where, again, like I said, they are working on it. I believe that we should, if we want to send a letter, I would say before we do, we discuss it with, again, our State House delegation, and see where they, where they feel on it.
Madam Chair, if I could just jump in for a quick second, because I think Selectman DePalmer may have misconstrued my comment here. I'm certainly not suggesting that our state legislative delegation have not been attentive to this. I think quite to the contrary, they've been very attentive, very responsive. We've had numerous email exchanges, we've had some Zoom sessions with our entire delegation. They're on it. I mean, they're, they're doing what they can.
It's on the MBTA side.
I guess my frustration is the lack of responsiveness from the MBTA. Just to be clear.
Right.
I can understand that, and I.
That's what the letter is, is about, not, you know, Senator Tarr, Rep. Robertson, they've been doing everything and then some. It was that we're not getting the, and no fault of theirs, that we're not getting the response from the MBTA. That's where, that's what this was.
I would still strongly recommend that you sit down and have a discussion with them before you send out.
I've spoken to them about this.
Can I finish, please?
I apologize. But I would sit down and have a discussion before you fire off any letter to anybody, and see what their feelings are. I apologize for.
I had a discussion with, that's okay. I had a discussion, what I was trying to say is, I had a discussion about this topic with Representative Robertson the other day. So he is well aware, and he has some thoughts on it as well.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I have no problem with sending a letter. I too appreciate the work of our delegation. I know Senator Tarr and Representative Robinson have been, you know, share our frustrations and have been working on this since the beginning of it. I appreciate their work as well. But I see no problem with sending a letter. Quite frankly, I don't care about anybody's feelings at the MBTA at this point, and this is my own personal opinion. It's unfortunate that Mr. Poftak couldn't be here tonight, but the fact remains that a little over a month ago, we lost a life here in town. And since that time, just in the last week or so, we, you know, there was a crash in Littleton over the weekend, there was a crash last week in Waltham. Both involved a train striking a vehicle just two weeks ago, a week ago this past Friday. You know, it was well documented by our public safety officials that there was an incident that appears to be mechanical, potentially because of weather, but there was an issue there. So a month ago, when we had the tragedy, it was human error, and I understand that there's an investigation going on. But now, we're looking into mechanical issues. So which one is it? So I can totally understand that residents have concerns when going over the tracks. And I appreciate the town manager and the chair working with our IT director and setting up the email address, which I think we should plug here tonight, that if folks have an incident that they have witnessed or been involved in, that they ought to, first of all, reach out to the police immediately if they believe that there is an imminent danger. But number two, if you had a circumstance that you were fortunately able to get through and can document for us, I appreciate the town administration building this case. And I would encourage people to email the address, which I believe is, the email is escaping me, but it will come to me.
Wilmington Train.
Wilmington Train, and our address. And it's been pushed out quite, by quite a bit, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that out by the end of the meeting. But I appreciate that, and I would encourage residents who have encountered anything in recent time here to continue to help us document those. And I'm glad to see that you guys did that.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm just as frustrated, and I know all of us have heard from people who are frustrated, nervous, and quite frankly, I've heard from some people that are flat-out scared, and I don't blame them, given the fact that every time you pick up the newspaper, there seems to be another incident with the MBTA. So I too really appreciate the delegation and what they're doing, and I trust that they're on top of it. And, but I see no problem in sending a letter from this board as well to the MBTA.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah. My suggestion of a letter, and I think I made that at the last meeting as well, is no reflection on our legislative delegation. I mean, they can be included in the letter as them fighting for us, but we're the leaders of the town. And we need to be out front with this. And we need to get a letter out, and we need to get some response from that. You know, we can't, we shouldn't be sitting back.
And I want to clarify, just for everybody, that this would be a letter written to the MBTA slash Keolis, I don't know if you want to include them, not to the governor, not to, it's a direct letter to MBTA with a copy to.
Yes.
Our delegation, the state delegation, the governor, and who, whomever.
And I would just note that in an email last, I think it was last week, I had suggested the idea in an email to our legislative delegation that, given what appears to be a lack of responsiveness, it would be that the town is considering sending a letter to the MBTA, you know, copying our legislative delegation. And I didn't see any objection to that from, from our state legislative delegation. So I'm certainly not looking to do an end run around our legislative delegation. We've been working very well together, and we should continue to do so.
Well, I do want to see a resolution to this. And I feel personally, the responsibility solely, solely on the MBTA. And I would have loved to have them here tonight. Believe me, I have never been so ready for a meeting with someone as I was tonight. I would have loved to taken them over the coals. And I am, I think, more disappointed now than I, now that they're not, they've decided not to show.
I just, I only have to say this because I said I would say it to both, in my discussion with Rep. Robertson today. They didn't not show. We put them in, on the agenda, just wanted to bring it out, we put them on the agenda hoping they would be here, and we wouldn't, we didn't find out, actually, it was supposed to be Friday, but we didn't find out until today. And knowing that we wouldn't be able to add them to the agenda because it was already posted, that's why we put it on there. So it's not that they canceled on us, it was, no, it's not, you didn't say that, I'm just clarifying for anybody watching. So I just didn't want it to be, you know.
No, but shame on them. As far as I'm concerned, shame on them. They were invited, and they decided not to appear. So shame on them, but.
Madam Chair, thank you to Ms. Dalton. We've got the email address that escaped me, but it is wilmtraks@wilmingtonma.gov. So that's W-I-L-M-T-R-A-K-S at WilmingtonMA.gov. Wilmtraks, and that's been pushed out on our town website and social media platforms, and I think a few other avenues.
Yep.
And I would encourage folks to, if you've witnessed anything, please document it so that we can add it to whatever the list that the town manager's compiling at this time. So thank you for that.
Yep. No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. So I guess the question is, yep, do we want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion's made to send a letter.
Any further discussion?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Are you in favor?
Yep.
Okay. So moved.
Okay, so the letter going out to the GM, copied to our legislative delegation, to our congressional delegation, and to the governor? Is that in keeping with what the intent is here?
And Keolis, the management of Keolis as well.
Now, we will move on to public comments. Public comment?
Good evening, Frank West, Two Rich Woodrose. Speaking on behalf of the Wilmington Minutemen, I just wanted to let you know that we're going to have our installation of offices on Sunday, March 26th, at 1:00 p.m. at Minutemen headquarters, which is directly behind the Harrington Tavern. I'd like to invite Board of Selectmen, anybody, you know, town official, anybody who would like to attend. The ceremony is relatively brief, then there'll be refreshments afterwards.
What time was that?
1:00.
1:00.
So there is no rain date, it's rain or shine. Minutemen don't rain, don't care rain, don't. We don't do rainouts.
Great.
Thank you.
Just want, again, just want to prove, I apologize, I meant to send out a written invite, and I will do that, but I just, I noticed that, you know, all of a sudden, it's like, oh, the date, corresponding to meeting.
Yeah.
If you could, obviously, you see forward that to Judy as well, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, absolutely. No problem. Thank you. Okay. Announcements? Any announcements?
Two quick ones, if I may. Want to give a congratulations to Wilmington's Bantam Ice Hockey Team, they won the state championship over the weekend, 4-2 over Bonstable, to win the state championship. So congratulations to the coaches and players and their families.
Coach Ryan, Coach Bob.
Yep, very exciting.
Congrats.
And I'm sure we'll be able to send them some congratulations, or maybe even invite them in.
Yeah, have them in, yeah.
Celebrate them, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, like we do with the baseball team.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
And several other before. One time, I think it involved the Selectmen wearing wigs, but I hope we won't, I hope it won't come to that. I do recall Mr. Hull wearing a blonde wig.
I do recall.
Yes, I won't let you forget it.
He wore Wildcat jerseys, that would be.
And that's all in good fun, so congratulations to them. And then also, it's coming up under important dates, but it bears repeating, that next Tuesday is a special town meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Shriner's Auditorium, so I would encourage everybody to attend. Thank you.
I believe we need a quorum of 150.
We do.
Is that correct? All right. New business?
I don't know if this would pertain to that or not, but I'd like Mr. Hull to find out, red light. They came to us how long ago about the emergency of?
Oh, the charging stations.
Charging, not the charging stations, on their generator that they needed.
Oh, right.
And it was in dire need. We were all going to have to use candles.
Yeah.
If they didn't get this in.
That's right.
Lights are still on?
Right.
Well.
Thankfully. No, thank you.
I was wondering if you could address that with them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Gary. Okay, now we will go on.
Before, I just did have one item that, under new business, just a request here that came in from Jennifer Bellano. She's writing on behalf of the Coral and Theater Arts Support, or CATS, Parents Group, asking about, apparently, they're in the process of holding their Marchipella fundraiser, which is a, an event on April 9th, and was asking about the ability to place yard signs on the Town Common. You know, as we've done in the past, we've allowed groups to place signs and suggest that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second, and I would just, discussion, if I may, just say it's a longstanding event, if people aren't familiar.
Absolutely, I agree.
And so, this is, I think, a very reasonable request, a great, great effort by this group, so thank you for the request.
Yep. All in favor? Now, important dates.
Now, important dates, March 1st, Board of Health, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. This is a continuation of the public hearing that commenced a few weeks ago, 887 Woburn Street. The disposal facility discussions, March 1st, also is a finance committee meeting at the high school, Room 1-62, 7:00 p.m. Finance Committee meeting with the school department. March 2nd is the Town School Administration Building Committee meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. March 3rd, the Finance Committee will be at the Shawshin Tech, 7:00 p.m., to discuss their budget. March 8th, as previously noted, is a special town meeting, Shriner's Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. March 9th, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. March 14th, another Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. March 15th, the Finance Committee and Planning Board Joint Public Hearing, 7:00 p.m., Town Hall Auditorium. March 16th, Town School Admin Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. March 23rd, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. Board of Selectmen meet again on March 28th, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. April 1st is the last day to register to vote in the annual town elections and town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open until 8:00 p.m.
Okay, now we'll go on to salute to service. Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and residents of the town, it's my privilege to present tonight's salute to service to Officer Scott Danette, who grew up in Wilmington, joined the Army, rose to the rank of Sergeant and Cargo Specialist. We appreciate his service. During his service, he obtained the rank of Sergeant, earning the Afghanistan Campaign Medal with a campaign star, the United States Coast Guard Meritous Team Commoditation Ribbon, Army Commoditation Medal, Armed Forces Reserves Medal with M Device, NATO Medal, National Defense Service Medal, and a Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. And for those reasons and many more, we salute his service. Also, want to commend him for his admirable service on the Wilmington Police Department since 2015. For these and many, many more reasons, we salute Officer Danette. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Okay, that concludes our meeting this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Second.
All right. So, thank you, everybody, have a good night.